I call this the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Jeremy Ezell. Jeremy is a deacon at the Washington Street Church of Christ. Our pledge tonight will be given by Ellis Ezell. Ellis is seventeen years old. He's a junior at RCA Riverside Christian Academy. He's a member of the Spiritual Life Team. He loves working with S.J. and L. Racing Team. He also spends time with his niece, Birdie Elizabeth Eeks, and he's the son of Julie and Jeremy Ezell. If you would, please stand for the invocation and pledge.
All right, let's pray. Dear God, I just want to come to you just thank you for being the awesome God that you are, God, the loving, caring, merciful Creator, sustainer of life, God, and just thank you for this time that we could come together, God, and that our county commissioners can meet and just talk about things of our community, God, our wonderful community that you've blessed us with, God, and just pray you just be with each one of our county commissioners, God, that you give them wisdom and understanding, God, to make the decisions for our community, God, and just that we can all be a light for you in this world, God, that we live in, God, and it's so many things going on in this world, God, that doesn't necessarily reflect you, God, but we want to do that, God, in our walk each and every day, God. Thank you for loving us once again, God, but most of all, thank you for your son, Jesus, and it's his name that we pray, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Ellis. At this time, we'll have a roll call by the county clerk.
Brandon Polley. David Sanders. Danny Walker. Ben Brown. Bonnie Caldwell. Terry Lynn Rogers. Jack Ashley. Kate Guin. Mark Mitchell. Randy Bradford. Mary Ann Tackett. Steve Spray. Daniel Eldridge. Jason Nix. Anthony Taylor. Doug Cunningham. Pat Haynes. Tori Young. Ricky Bryant. Glenn Douglas. Steve Guntherberg. Troy Frazran. Jason Hambrick. Jeannie Rolls Walter. Have twenty commissioners present, four absent.
Okay. Under announcements, I've been asked by multiple people, when do you have discussion? Please use a microphone. It may slow us down just a little, but people on the recording cannot hear you, and it's hard for Phyllis to understand everything that's going on far as her getting the documentation of the discussion down. So if you'll please do that. Like to update you on the animal control, what's going on there. At this time, you know, we're still operating what we're calling an emergency situation on that. We do have thirteen dogs in the shelter at this time. We've had fourteen. One was reclaimed by an owner. They are operating well there for the situation that we're operating in. The Mike Davis and his crew with the Sheriff Department has enclosed an area there that we're going to be using during this cold weather for housing of some of the dogs that are there. But tonight, I'm also going to ask you to look at, each of you should have received a plat of property that has been priced to us that might be a future site for an animal shelter. I will be asking for an approval for us to get a surveyor. Mike Gooding is the one we contacted for looking at that. It's a field lot all across Plasky Highway there. It's across from the CFW headquarters. It's about a hundred yards from the current animal shelter and across the road there. But part of it shows on there not in the floodplain. We think the other front part of that is not, but we would need a surveyor to approve that where we could get it taken out of the floodplain. Whether we move forward on the property would be up to this body and also the Board of Aldermen of the city. So I will, under budget, ask for three thousand dollars out of our already appropriated money for animal shelter. We appropriated two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for that. We spent about eighteen when we did those repairs on the electrical stuff at the shelter that was not up to code, and so we still have about two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in that fund. So that will be coming up later. Any questions as far as it relates to animal control or the shelter? You're sure welcome to go out and look at that. I would ask you to call law and schedule just going that. But you can see, if you go through there, situation's not good there. That building's, for twenty years, had no upkeep on it, and it's in pretty tough situation. We don't know the asbestos situation on it, but the people that have been meeting, and Sheriff McConnell's here, she's in that group, in going through that, it's nearly been, I guess, unanimous, it has been a unanimous decision that that probably is not going to work long-term for us. It's going to work short-term with us spending a little money, but the city members that have been there at the committee and the county ones, too, pretty much agree that we need to look at something that's going to last us fifty years. We've looked at most things, you know, when we did EMA, when we're looking at archives that we will discuss tonight, when we've looked at all the improvements we've done to the courthouse. We've looked at every situation that we want to make sure that all of our facilities are up to date and should last fifty years from the time now that we're going through all these improvements, because we've done a lot. We've spent a lot of money, but we haven't wasted any money, I don't think, on anything. So that will come up, and I'll answer any questions you might have as far as animal control or this property. Okay? Yes, okay, Commissioner.
Has there been any discussion on what will be done with the current building?
If we move from it or what we're doing, or what we're proposing doing now?
I mean, once we get relocated, where we're going to go?
It would probably sell. I don't know of any use that the city and county would have of that.
We don't have enough information of what the value of that property may be?
I can tell you this, it's not, it's not worth what we paid for it then, just because it's much more dilapidated. It was in good shape when we purchased it. We purchased it with the city for a hundred thousand dollars total, fifty thousand, fifty thousand, but it was in good shape. It had been used by Federal Animal Clinic, then it was sold to Donna Stewart, who was a veterinarian and ran her practice there for a while. It was in good shape when it was taken over there, you know, but they were tenants and they didn't, it wasn't their property, and they didn't do any improvements to that building. They did some improvements for outside of that in building other facilities, but inside of the building. And to be honest, a lot of that building did not suit itself for an animal shelter. So they didn't do a lot, it would take a lot of improvements for them to be able to use a lot of that building for an animal shelter. Anything else? Okay. We do not have any public comments tonight, so I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of our November twenty-first meeting. Commissioner Rogers makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Frazran makes a second. Any questions, comments on last month's meeting minutes? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have received eleven monthly committee meeting minutes in your packet. Would entertain a motion acknowledging receipt of those. Commissioner Frazran makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Rogers makes a second. Any questions on those? All in favor acknowledging receipt of those, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next one, Dr. Bill Heath, our Director of Schools, report on the Highland Rim School Project update. Dr. Heath?
Thank you, Mayor. Just like we did when Blanche was, when we built Blanche School, want to be sure and come and give you an update every, every couple of months, if not more frequently than that, just to let you know what's going on and where we are in the progress. So November sixth, the bonds were signed, and on November ninth, we closed them out, and forty days later is today. And I can assure you, if you go out to that site, if you haven't been there in the last forty days, it's almost unrecognizable in the back. They've been working fast and furious there. A lot of, lot of things have changed back there behind the school in particular. So want to be sure and update you, like I said, every month, and then if there's any questions that you have, I'd be glad to try, either answer them or try to answer them. Commissioner Bryant there can help me out if we, if I don't know the answer, he probably will know it. And another thing that I think's important, too, is, is, you know, you're our funding body, and, you know, the last, the six months that we all went through before this money was appropriated to build Highland Rim was, at times, controversial. It was, there was a lot of conflict, a lot of different things happening. So I think, from my seat, I would, to all of you, to give you the same information at the same time, and I'll do that either every month or every other month when I come in. If something urgent comes up and you need an answer, I'm just going to email all of you with the answer, because I want you to hear the same thing at the same time. I think that's important on a project like this. And I'd also ask that if you have constituents that are asking very specific or detailed questions about the project, forward those on to either the central office or to your school board member, and we'll, we'll get an answer to that constituent or to you guys when we update you, because, again, we want to make sure everybody, make sure that we do communicate with you in a timely manner when we can. So I asked Mr. Bryant to give me an update, and I asked Dr. Pickens, the principal at the school, to give me an update. So I'm going to go down the list of what they have, have given me, and then if you have any questions at that point, I'd be glad to try to answer them. The building site is close to level, really close to being level, and I know I saw a lot of pipes out there, so they're ready, they're, they're putting things in place. The service road should have tile and gravel this week. The service road, there's a service road that cuts through Highland Rim's property. It's between the playground and the school. That, that road has been on the drawing board for twelve years. Okay? And it never has reached a level to where we would fund it because of its cost, but it is an important part of this project. The reason it's been on the drawing board for about twelve years is because if you've ever been out there at car rider time, either pickup or drop off, Old Huntsville Highway gets backed up pretty badly out there, and this will, this will get folks off of the, off of that road as well, as being a service road for this project. So this campus will now have one, two, three, three entrances and possibly a fourth road behind, you know, possibly behind the property there that we can use, that I'm sure they'll all be used at some point in time during this construction project, but that's the road that goes through there that you probably have seen if you've been on that property. The water service is complete. We've changed the main intersection. I sort of brought a big drawing up here so you could see it, but if you recall where the new school is going to sit, there's an intersection of the new road that cuts through the property and the current road that comes off of Huntsville, Old Huntsville Highway, and they intersect there on the property, not too far from the corner of the football field. That's now going to be a roundabout for traffic flow and, and to, to help traffic flow quicker, and it won't be, everybody have to stop and so forth. So, so that's one change that has been made. The fire marshal has released the main building plans, and everything is progressing on time. And a reminder of what on time means, the substantial completion date in the contract with the construction manager was July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. So, you know, that's the substantial completion date. Now, Dr. Pickens, I asked her to look more at some of the on-the-campus logistics that she might want to, that we might could update everybody on. So she gave me a bulleted list here. The back parking lot where, beside the football field, no longer exists. That's where the school's going to be, actually. So teachers and staff have been asked to fill in the side parking lots for, for the overflow and some in the front, and so far, the two lots have accommodated everyone as well as all of our tutors and the four buses that, that park out there. So, so far, she hasn't seen any issues with that. So, and thus far, since beginning construction, we've had one event where parents were on campus during the school day, but as always, they split those all-school events into three events because of the crowded situation and the size of the gym and so forth. The only difference that she's mentioned in, in her bulleted points here is they're a little more lenient with allowing parents to park in spaces around campus that might, in the past, they might not have said, hey, don't park on the grass right here. The main thing is they want to make sure parents don't park over on Old Huntsville Highway or on anybody's property out there. So, so they're, they're very cognizant of that. Basketball games, there's been some challenge there for the same reason, and because it's after hours and visitors are coming to the campus, and they may not know, hey, I shouldn't park over here, this, this belongs to this house here. So a little bit of concern there that they're working through. The superintendent over the job has the district calendar and the arrival and dismissal times, and she says he's done very well to assure that construction does not pose any interruption to the school day. Technology has installed, our tech department has installed a camera that points directly on the construction site, and we're looking at also getting that onto a webpage for this project, so it can, things can be updated in real time on that webpage, and that should be occurring pretty soon if it's, if it's not already up tonight, but it, it should be happening pretty soon as far as that website and that real-time camera footage. The pre-K playground had to be removed, and it's being installed near the kindergarten There was one very old playground, it was about fifteen or sixteen years old, that was in need of repair, and the, the construction supervisor has offered to remove it and destroy it without, without charge there. So that's been done. Logistics of parking, arrival and dismissal was and continues to be discussed, so that when they, when the campus is more complete, they'll be utilizing it more to a, to an efficient manner than was ever done in previously there. And, and the last thing she wanted me to mention was that the gymnasium, just a reminder, one of the changes, it may have been a last-minute change, but one of the changes that occurred is the gymnasium in the new building will not have a, a stage area like some of the gyms do, like their current gym does. And the reason for that is capacity. We wanted a gym that would be big enough to have a whole-school event and, and seat everybody when they come, and, and so that end zone, you might call it, of the basketball court is seating now. So, and I forget the exact number of seats. I want to say around thirteen hundred. Is that the gym? Do you remember, Ricky? Okay, somewhere around thirteen hundred is what the gym will seat, which is, is pretty big for, for a middle school. That's, oh, I'm sorry, there's one more. She said that she and her team have developed multiple plans for the split and looking at when the new school is ready to go, and at the time, we'll be renovating some of the old buildings. So, so they are planning to move into that new building, grades three through eight, four through eight, five through eight, or whatever grade configuration they need to while any renovations are occurring in the old building, once we know what has to be done and have, have that planned and on a timeline. So that's, that's the update for this month. Questions or from anyone?
Any questions? Commissioner Frazran?
Something I asked this question, one of the presidents of that school, are there, what's the plans for staff? Are we going to have dual principals, last principals?
Yeah, our plans are, you know, we did that survey that night, too. I don't know if you, if you participated, participated in that. One of the things I was asked that night was that same question, and you may have been the one to ask, Commissioner, but at that time, I was thinking that we would have a, a principal and one, one assistant principal for each building. One thing that came out of that survey was a great desire to make sure we had two, two people in each building. So right now, I would tell you, our plans are, and we actually have it funded and in our budget now, is to have a, an executive principal that's over that school and then three other administrators. So at least we always have two and two out there at that point in time, but one of them will be the person in charge, Dr. Pickens. That, I hope that answers your question.
Any other questions, comments? Dr. Heath?
And at the same time, we're looking at, like, making, how do we make sure we, we function two libraries? You know, do we have to have two librarians or is it one librarian and an educational assistant running the other library with, with one librarian in charge? We're looking at all those things right now, and our, our hopes and plans are to make sure they're in this year's budget so that, so that going forward, it's there and there's no surprises when that school does open completely out there.
Thank you. Next item, Lincoln County Health System update. Mary Beth Seals, President of the Health System.
Well, good evening and Merry Christmas. I was last with you in July. I enjoy coming and giving an update. I brought some guests with me tonight, and I hope that was okay. We called ahead to make sure. Tonight, I'd like to focus on our Patrick Rehab and Wellness Center. As you all remember in the past, the Patrick did not or was not faring as well as we would have liked to have expected it to. The Patrick has been a staple in the community for a very long time. It's great that it offers lots of wellness activities for the community. It's also where we do our outpatient PTOT and speech, and I'm proud to say it is doing very, very well. It is, it is very profitable right now. We're very busy there also on the PTOT and speech side, somewhere over a hundred visits a day. We're also in the schools right now. But that credit is, is not to be something that, that I should take credit for, or I think that even Justin Gross, our Director of the Patrick, that he would take credit for. I, I think we could go back even to before, you know, I came back to town, and we would give that credit a lot to our 501(c)(3) organization that came to be the Friends of the Patrick. And I, I think they're a group that spearheaded what we'll call Saving the Patrick long before, when, when we thought the Patrick maybe wasn't going to make it, and there were talks of, of closing this organization, or closing the Patrick and, and maybe having it, not having it in the community. So tonight, I'm going to call on John Richardson. He's going to be the spokesperson for the Patrick to talk a little bit about what all has happened in the last few years at the Patrick, some things that their organization has done, and also some generous funds that were donated to the Friends of the Patrick on your behalf, just shortly before we became a Huntsville Hospital organization. He's going to tell you a little bit about some of the things that, that money went towards purchasing. I believe there's a handout.
There was in our.
That he's going to speak to as well, and we'd like to recognize the members of the Friends of the Patrick who are here tonight. So, John?
Thank you very much, Ms. Seals. I appreciate that. And Mr. Mayor, fellow commissioners, thank you all for the opportunity to speak, and I'll try and be brief, but I understand everybody's, y'all got this in your, in your packet, I think. We passed that out, but first thing I'd like to say is, you know, thank you all for the opportunity that you gave us. You know, we did, the, we, being the Friends of the Patrick, you know, have been involved in, in trying to keep the Patrick open from the get-go, and we appreciate the opportunity that you all gave us to do that, and it wouldn't have been possible without, without your vote of confidence, without allowing us to at least give it a shot. And then we appreciate the funds that you were so kind and generous to give us to, you know, let us do, do a lot of these updates that, that you see, the gymnasium, the pool, pool and locker rooms, the weight and cardio equipment. You know, we've done a lot of improvements, and we spent, you know, quite frankly, all of the money that you, you had allotted to us and given us, we spent to date, I think, fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy, fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, and we've, you know, done a lot of improvements. Like I said, we've improved the pool, we've bought weight equipment, we've resurfaced the track, if memory serves me. We're right now in the process, the Patrick is, and I, I will applaud Justin Gross, I'm going to call him out, because he, he's done a fantastic job of overseeing these projects and helping make sure it gets done, and I would also applaud, you know, everybody that's involved with the Friends of the Patrick with the support of Huntsville Hospital that Ms. Seals has been superb. So it, it's, it, it takes, takes a village or a community to make something like this work, and I'm just thankful that we've been able to do it. But, you know, we've come a long way since we were, since we formed the Friends of the Patrick. At that time, when we, when we formed it, we had memberships of one thousand four hundred and seventy, so fourteen hundred and seventy members. Today, we've got two thousand four hundred and fifty-one members, so we're up seventy percent. We had monthly visits back when the Friends of the Patrick were formed, of three thousand and ninety-two was our average. Now we're averaging four thousand nine hundred, so we're up fifty-eight percent, and, you know, more and more folks are, are coming in there. I was in Giles County in a meeting this afternoon, actually, and my friend, Tim Underwood, who's an attorney over there, was asking me about the Patrick, and, which I thought was ironic with me coming here to speak, but he said, you know, I hear it's doing great, and if I lived over there, I definitely want to join. I wish we had something like that in Giles County. So it's, it's, you know, been a benefit to so many folks, and we just really appreciate what you all have allowed us to do. We appreciate the Huntsville Hospital, once again, for, you know, taking it over, and, you know, they, they've stepped up and put a lot of money into it as well, but, you know, we've tried to take the money that you've given us and use it wisely. We've gotten additional TVs, we've gotten treadmills. Again, Justin and I spoke today, and he's doing upholstery work on some of the equipment upstairs that is needed, and, you know, we've got folks that are coming in as personal trainers, helping people, and, you know, just a lot of positive stuff's going on and with, with the Patrick Wellness Center, and I actually would say, I'm sure it is keeping people well and keeping, keeping them out of the hospital, which is opening beds for people that really need them. So it's been a positive thing, and thank you all for what you did for us. We really appreciate it. So, and thank all of you all, everybody, I'm not going to call everybody by name, but Friends of the Patrick, because it's, it's definitely a, it's definitely been a team effort. So thank you, and does anybody have any questions?
Any questions of John and Mary Beth?
I did have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Paul.
Now, Terry, you're not exempt.
Just Terry, go ahead. I didn't hear you.
I, I know. I had spoken with your assistant not too long ago. I think the commissioners are exempt from any discounts. Is that correct for the Patrick or no?
Now, when you say my sister, are you talking about Allison Darnes at the law office?
Hers.
Okay, all right. I wasn't sure.
Sorry about that.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, I'll let Ms. Seals.
So you mean from, from before, were you probably benefiting from that?
Yes. I just wondered if the commissioners were, could, you know, get a discount. I didn't know if we were or not.
I assume you're probably not getting that at this time. Is, is that correct?
I haven't joined. I want to, but I just.
I put you on the spot by asking that.
That's okay, no, I'm fine with it, but no, I was just wanting to know if we could get a discount if we joined.
Okay, that's, that's probably something I need to, to check into, but, and I'm happy to do that, okay? Let, let me look into that outside.
I think that would be great if you could.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll look into that, okay? Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment.
Okay.
Friday was my last day in therapy. I went to the doctor today and released me, and I'll tell you, you can't find a better physical therapy department. I've had about every one of them jerk me and stretch me, and it's worked, and I was amazed at sitting a lot of times waiting. of times waiting on my therapy session to see the people coming in and coming out. They have very friendly staff. I was just really, really impressed. Like Terry, I'm probably gonna join, and probably should already join, but they have really impressed me with, and Huntsville Hospital has done a lot of work. If you haven't been down there, they've got, they've really spiced the place up very well, and a lot of, so I'm just so thankful that we still have.
And they can make it easy on you on joining, because when I was a commissioner and still, they take it out of your check, so you never miss it. And I, I don't know about the discounts. I don't think I get a discount, but they do take it automatically out, so that makes it convenient for you.
Into that. I'll say as I close, too, we have done some great updates at the Patrick, and I, I'm proud of, there's more work to do. I'd like to think we're gonna break it out into, into four phases, the updates that we're gonna do from our side, but we've pulled up a lot of carpet and put down some good clean flooring in the OTPT and speech side, and we've done some great painting and lighting, and we've got the, the basketball court resurfaced just recently, and the aerobic floor upstairs. You'll think those ladies are coming through that floor when they're doing that dance to fit class with Ms. Monte, but there, there's just a lot of great things going on, and I, I love talking about students. My favorite thing is just to see the kids that have come back after school, that they have rejoined and memberships, and young people coming after school to work out. It's a, it's a great thing, and I'm so glad that our community, our community has a wellness center. It's a, it's a special staple in our community. So, thank you for your support of it, and thanks for allowing me to continue to come, and I'll be back in July, and we'll talk about some exciting things that we're working on at the first of the year, so.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Thank you, John.
Thank you all.
You know, one of the things, we got a, a beautiful county seat, and we got beautiful land here in Lincoln County, but once you get past the people and the land, the two most important things as far as our community is education and healthcare. And we've got superb systems in all of our education systems, and we got a great hospital and all the other facilities that are ancillary to them. So, thank you for what you do in education, and thank you what you do for healthcare, too. Our next item is consideration for approval to elect Bonnie Colwell and Danny Walker to the Agricultural Committee. Mark Mitchell and Ricky Bryant, they've served their maximum terms, and if elected Commissioner Colwell and Walker, their terms would expire on January of 2026. What's the will of the commission on this? Commissioner Bryant? You make a motion, make a motion, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any questions? All in favor of approval of those two to the Ag Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Next item, consideration for approval to reelect Joane McGee and Deanna Bayless to the Agricultural Committee. Those terms would expire also on January 2026. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Young makes a motion for approval for them to be reelected. Do I have a second? Commissioner Mitchell, seconds. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor of approving those two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to appoint one commissioner to the Audit Committee. Commissioner Walker resigned. That term expires November of '25. Do I hear nominations for replacement on that?
Chairman, who's on that committee?
Hmm, it'll take me just a second, because I have to look on the back. They're not in alphabetical order, of course. It's on the other side, okay. Audit Committee currently, Commissioner Young, Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Bradford, and Commissioner Walker. So Commissioner Walker is the one who resigned. Do y'all wanna know who's eligible for his number of committees? I got that somewhere if you wanna know it. My stack is tall tonight. Okay, here we go. Here are the commissioners that are not on the maximum number of committees. Coley Colwell, Rogers, Ashley Guin, Bradford, Tackett, Nix, Bryant, Douglas, Guntherberg, and Hambrik. Okay. She, grab that. It's Commissioner Coley is who he nominated, but if I'm gonna make-
I'm gonna make Brandon Coley.
Okay. Brandon Coley has been nominated for that position. Commissioner Young?
I have a microphone, but I nominate Kate Guin.
Kate Guin, I guess I'm gonna just have to repeat everything they say. Commissioner Guin has been nominated by Commissioner Young. Anyone else? They have a motion. Commissioner Frasran makes a motion, nomination ceased. Do I have a second to that? Commissioner Guntherberg seconds it. All in favor of nomination ceased? We vote on those two nominees, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. When we call a roll, you'll either say one of the two names, Coley or Guin. Ready? Okay.
David Sanders. Walker. Bonnie Colwell.
Guin.
Terry Lynn Rogers.
Guin.
Jack Ashley.
Guin.
Kate Guin. Mark Mitchell.
Guin.
Mary Ann Tackett.
Colwell.
Steve Spray.
Guin.
Daniel Eldridge.
Guin.
Jason Nix.
Guin.
Anthony Taylor.
Guin.
Pat Haynes.
Guin.
Tori Young.
Guin.
Ricky Bryant.
Guin.
Glenn Douglas.
Guin.
Steve Guntherberg.
Guin.
Troy Frasran.
Colwell.
Jason Hambrik.
Guin.
Jenny Rose Walter.
Guin.
Have three for Commissioner Coley, seventeen for Commissioner Guin, and four absent.
Okay, congratulations, Commissioner Guin. You've been elected to that committee. Our next item, consideration for approval to elect one commissioner to the Rules and Legislative Committee. Steve Spray, Steve Spray resigned his position on that. That term expires next September, September of 2024. If you remember, we had a tie vote at the last meeting, and we did not have a total of thirteen votes for either one of them. So the floor is now open for nominations for filling that position on Rules and Legislative Committee.
I make a motion, like, Commissioner Rogers.
Commissioner Rogers has been nominated.
I'm gonna nominate Bonnie Colwell.
Bonnie, Commissioner Colwell has been nominated.
How many committees does Commissioner Colwell have now?
Let me tell you, Commissioner Colwell is on three. Commissioner Rogers is on three. I would entertain a motion that nomination ceased if y'all do not want to nominate somewhere. Commissioner Spray makes a motion. Commissioner Douglas seconds it. All in favor of nomination ceased, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Nomination is ceased. We'll have a roll call between Colwell and Rogers. Once she calls your name, express your opinion on which of those you would like to see elected for that position, Commissioner Colwell or Commissioner Rogers.
Jenny Rose Walter.
Rogers.
Jason Hambrik.
Colwell.
Troy Frasran.
Rogers.
Steve Guntherberg.
Rogers.
Glenn Douglas.
Rogers.
Ricky Bryant.
Colwell.
Tori Young.
Colwell.
Pat Haynes.
Rogers.
Anthony Taylor.
Rogers.
Jason Nix.
Rogers.
Daniel Eldridge.
Colwell.
Steve Spray.
Colwell.
Mary Ann Tackett.
Rogers.
Mark Mitchell.
Rogers.
Kate Guin.
Colwell.
Jack Ashley.
Rogers.
Terry Lynn Rogers.
Rogers.
Bonnie Colwell.
Colwell.
Danny Walker.
Rogers.
David Sanders.
Colwell.
Go ahead and tell me, nobody got thirteen votes?
No one received thirteen votes.
Okay, well, we'll try that again next month. The third time be a charm, I believe. Our next item is animal control. Let me explain this. We need a motion acknowledging that the city and county took over animal control in the city and county on October 1st, and that we're request, requesting where appropriate that court contributions be donated to the animal shelter. Currently, the Humane Society received contributions when they were doing animal control, but we need a motion from this body for Lisa Simmons, our court clerk, to be able to do this. Does everybody understand what happens in the court system on that? A lot of times, you know, there'll be people that get minor fines, that a lot of times, they will just have to make a contribution to a junior's house, animal control, that type of thing. So, we want to make it where that animal control can receive some of that funding. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Spray seconds it. Any questions or discussions on that? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Our next item, and Mary Beth is still here. The reason this item on there is the release of the corner lot at the Patrick from the Huntsville Hospital lease. We have had a company that has approached the city and county about having an outdoor exercise facility. We've discussed it with the hospital system, the city system, I mean, the city of Fayetteville. To move forward on this, the location that everybody has wanted it, if we do, it's, this is not a motion to move forward on the park, but that the hospital would release that back to the county as basically their contribution if we locate the park there. Anything to add to that, Mary Beth?
No, sir. None other than you have our permission for the recent property to be protected.
Okay. This would be a motion that if they approved releasing it, that we would accept it back as property. Nothing changes far as, it's not taxed now, because it's hospital leased and county-owned, so would not change. It would just make an option for the county to be able to use that lot for whatever we decided to use it for.
Are you gonna give us some more information about this project?
Yeah, the project we would. This is just, this is just a step of, that the hospital would release this property, whatever we decide to use it for.
Will we approve?
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Bryant. Commissioner Young, seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval of acceptance if the hospital system sees fit to release that from their lease? All say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Our next one, Tracy Perkins, Lincoln County Planner.
This is file number 2023 R8. It is a request to rezone a sixty-nine-hundredth acre portion of one, of one fifty-eight Flintville Road from A1 to A2. It is tax map 130 parcel seven. The owner applicant plans to subdivide that, and, let's see, subdivide and retain the remainder eighty-two point six-six acres as A1, and properties to the northwest, east and east are zoned A1. Properties to the south are A2. It's not in a flood zone. The Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation on November 2nd. We brought this before you last month, and a public hearing was held this earlier tonight. No question. So now we bring it to you again for final consideration.
Before I ask for a motion one way or the other, any questions on this? No questions? I entertain a motion for, okay, Commissioner Frasran makes a motion for approval to change that zoning. Commissioner Bryant seconds it. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval of change of zoning on that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Anything else, Tracy?
I believe that's all.
Thank you. Doug Cunningham is sick, so we'll delay the IDB report until next month. I think we're ready for the Budget Committee report. Commissioner Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met on December the 5th, 2023, at 6:00 PM at Lincoln Central Academy. All members present, with the exception of Commissioner Taylor. Chairman Cunningham opened the meeting. There were no public comments. Item one, County Mayor, Open Meeting Technologies, and that's attached. After much discussion regarding open meeting technologies, voting system, there was a commotion, not a commotion, a motion, by Commissioner Colwell, seconded by Commissioner Spray, and passed six yes, one no, and one absent to approve not renewing the Open Meetings Technology Contract for thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, most of the discussion around that was, we don't use it much. When we do use it, basically, we've used it in voting when there has been a lot of discussion on a different item. It does have advantages there. Does it have the advantage that we want to pay the thirty-five hundred dollars for annual renewal? That's up to this body to decide that, but there was discussion on it, and when there's been discussion between Phyllis and I, you know, we like things about it, but we don't like how it does slow down the meeting far as being able to have to go through your computers on doing everything. We do not have to use the full system if you vote to renew it. We still can use it the way we did, so that's up to this body whether we renew that or not. I would entertain a motion one way or the other. Or not.
I move that we do not concur with the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Okay, that we do renew the thirty-five hundred, okay?
That's correct.
Do I have a second on renewing the contract? Seconded by Commissioner Frasran. Any discussion at this time? The motion is being to not concur with the Budget Committee, but to renew the contract, the thirty-five hundred dollars where we would have that option to use that during voting.
Mr. Chairman, what's that do? Is that the, where it shows you vote?
Yes, sir.
That's about all we use it for, isn't it?
That's, that's all we've used. It has a lot of more capabilities, but that basically is the only time we've used it. Yes, sir.
Is there not any technology we couldn't do a simple spreadsheet of some kind, and Phyllis just, if I say yes, she can put it up there, yes, so that people can see?
There probably is some way of doing it. You cannot, you would have to have the person's name and how you vote. It'd be Commissioner Ashley, you'd write on there how you voted, and then we'd have to count those votes, because you can't have a secret ballot. You can't just, you know, put it in a hat. You can put it in a hat, long as your name and how you voted on it.
If we had a spreadsheet with everybody's name on it, and she called my name out, and I said yes, and she just pushed the button and it showed yes?
Well, we're basically doing that when she does a roll call now. The problem with that is, everybody doesn't vote at the same time, so you have to follow the leaders, you know, in any voting, so that's about the only advantage I see the system is. It's probably fair when you have close votes, so it, it's up to y'all. It doesn't, it doesn't matter to Phyllis and I which way-
Public vote, if it's serious, what you're gonna do is a roll call vote, and not just everybody say aye. So it's, other than just having that physical picture of who voted what, that's the only advantage.
The only thing is, on that, you don't vote all at one time. You don't press a button and you record it. You know, when Commissioner Ashley votes yes, Commissioner Taylor votes yes, because Commissioner Ashley voted that, you have your friends following friends, so. Okay.
Yeah, I, I would like for us to be able to utilize that system to keep the, uh, the anon and, I can't say that word, I can't just put it out. That not knowing which way everybody votes, so you don't have to follow the leader, like you said. And you can't count votes at the end, that way it's more, I guess, a truer vote, so you don't have to follow the leader, as you just said. We all vote at the same time, and then it shows the results. Not no, Jack votes yes, Mr. Taylor votes yes, and then E- Etheridge, or Eldridge votes no because he was mad at them two. So, you know, along those lines, I mean.
You got over it, don't you?
Is there a simpler system we can use to get the motions out there, other than this open meeting?
Okay. Commissioner Nix?
Kind of echoing what y'all are saying, um, to me, the thirty-five hundred dollars, if we're not using it every meeting, for every vote, in my opinion, even down to the minutes. I mean, we've said before, you could still say, I read, you know, like you've done before, Jason Nix motion, Frasran seconds, alright, now I'll vote. I could get behind, I, I like that part of it, as far as the voting, I, I like the voting part of it, because I, for everything Troy said, and, and Jack was saying too. Um, but if we're not using it every meeting, we've used it, I've been a commissioner a year and a half-ish, we've used it three meetings, three. Last time was on the special call meeting for the, for the poverty tax vote. And to me, money well spent on thirty-five hundred dollars a year would be if we're using it every meeting for every vote. I mean, I know it'll slow down, but I think it'll pick up a little faster. Now, that also puts a little onus back on us commissioners, you gotta come charged and ready to go, literally. Um, because Phyllis, because that's gonna slow down anymore if we forget this, don't charge this, or something, because now Phyllis has gotta go to that one person and do, do that vote. That's just, that's just my opinion, I think, if we're using it for every meeting, for every vote, in those long, it's, I think it's, I don't know if it's money well spent or not, I still think it'd be cheaper, but, um, it's what we have. If we, if we're not, then I, then I would concur with the other, with the budget committee, so.
Okay, and let me make sure I understand. You're not saying use the complete system, but use the voting system every meeting on every vote?
I'm saying you could use the whole system, I'm fine with that too. I'm saying, but at the very least, if you're gonna, if we're gonna renew it for thirty-five dollars a year, it needs to be at least every vote.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
And this is, the reason we don't use it on every vote, Phyllis and I concur, you know, before every meeting, that we think we need to use it during this meeting. And when I think it's something, you know, that's going to be controversial, or there's not gonna be a strong, one-sided vote, I'll say, no, Phyllis, I don't think we need to use it. So, uh, if you, uh, you know, if you're objecting to the way it's been done, it's my fault, because I called, I called the shots when we use it or not, basically. So, uh, that's, that's the way it's been done.
But no, the main, like I said, the main thing on all that, it's money well spent if we're using it, if we're using it. That's just my opinion on that. But I also do like the, the follow the leader vote to, to negate that, is worth it too.
Okay.
And what, what I said, uh, during the budget committee, I'll kinda iterate what Commissioner Frasran said. I don't know, commissioner's long been gone now, uh, passed away a long time ago. And he told me my first year as a commissioner, he said, on something tight, if thirteen people vote for you, you can vote no and be the good guy. That's his exact words, and that's the reason I think we should use it, because you get what every commissioner truly thinks, and not, you got thirteen people that pass, so I'm gonna be the good guy voting no.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
So, the reason why I would reject it was because it wasn't being used in every meeting?
I don't remember the total discussion in the budget meeting, but that was, that was one of the points, the reason, uh, the vote was not to renew it, because we're not using it for all the capabilities that it, that, uh, is capable of doing.
Well, I think we should be using it for the capabilities that we pay for.
Okay.
And I would like to see Commissioner Ricky to amend this thing and say that you, you vote, you propose that we do that, provided we use it at every meeting. It doesn't make sense to allocate money like that and don't use it.
And, and I wouldn't amend my motion, because I think that that, that lies with the chairperson. Um, you know, chairman, in my opinion, runs a meeting, and he can run a meeting any way he wants to. I just think that it gives us a lot of latitude in that on those tighter things. It's well within his privy to use it the way he sees fit.
But I think that's the reason why people vote to not renew it, because it wasn't being used. I'm sure if, if, if it is said that it will be used, I'm, I'm sure that they might want to reconsider their vote.
But I'll leave that with the chairman, as far as, you, you feel free to do that if you like, but I, I'll leave that with the chairman, I think he has that discretion.
If we use the full system, it's gonna double the time for a commission meeting.
Well, is it transparency though?
Well, the only transparency is gonna be on the voting part of it. The rest of it is, it's just, you gotta click on the talk, you gotta click on to make a motion, you gotta click on the second, it, it's not just, uh, the way we carry on the meetings now. Any other comments or questions?
Seems like if we use all that stuff there, then it would actually, the meeting would flow.
Oh, better, because you wouldn't have people talking over one another. You got the buttons there to push, push the buttons, and then acknowledge who's there. Then you wouldn't be calling me Guntherberg whenever I second something, and he sits there, but he's quiet.
Steve, I'm sorry I ever did that.
I, I just one last question. Do you have a, maybe I spoke out of turn, do you have capability of doing what I said, where you can recognize so-and-so that motion, or they made the motion second, and now vote? Can you, maybe I spoke out of turn, Phyllis?
Well, in the system, there's, on your, um, notebooks that you have, um, you would, if you wanted to make the motion, you would choose that selection. Um, and then there's also the capability to amend a motion, which then we're gonna have to spend the ti- and, and I don't care one way or the other, because I don't use it for minutes, I have a separate sys- a computer for that.
Right.
But there are several things that it would be beneficial for. Um, motion and second, and request to speak are all part of that.
I do remember our initial meetings using it, and it did seem kinda clunky. I kinda discounted the time, thinking, well, this is a new system, we're all trying to work out the bugs together. But I do know there was a couple times where either it was ahead, or say it went to Steve before it went to me, where, and all of a sudden, there's a motion to second before I even saw the screen. And now, is that a, is that a problem with this, with open meeting, the system? Or is that a problem with just how the wifi is hitting each individual tablet? I, I don't, I don't even think Matt would know, I'm not gonna ask him.
An answer, so.
Yeah, and I don't even think he would really know the answer to that, so. With that being said, that could be another issue that we can't even fix.
And, and I'm, I don't, it doesn't bother me one way or the other, how you feel, yeah.
Could you literally just take it out to where it's pretty much just a voting machine, at that point?
Well, that's all it has been.
I mean, that's all it did, I mean, even taking out the request to speak.
Downgraded to that?
Yeah, downgrade from a request to speak, taking the motions and the seconds out.
I have a question for Bender, find out what it actually means, simply a vote, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
We talked with Bender at the last conference we went to, and he said that they would be more than happy to come down and, and go over a lot of this stuff, but thought we'd be getting more utilization out of it. Uh, thank me and Nick spoke, and standing there, when, when he talked to us about that. And, you know, they was kinda confused while we was wanting to discontinue the service, when it had too many possibilities.
The capabilities are good, yeah. I wouldn't argue that at all, because it's in there.
Can we put this on hold, and then have somebody come to brief the commission, to talk about the capabilities, and whatever issues that people have, and make me a way to overcome that?
We have a motion on the floor that we'd vote on unless you wanna amend that motion to that, have those wording.
I want to amend that motion for what I just said.
Okay. I have a second, uh, Commissioner Ashley seconds that. Okay. The motion to amend is that we, uh, delay this until we have somebody from the company come and explain, and, uh, go over it with us. Um, any discussion on that amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Okay, the amendment passed. Now we got a motion as amended. Uh, the motion was that we purchase that, but the amendment is that we would delay that until we, uh, have the company come explain it. Everybody understand what you're voting on, the motion as amended? Any discussion? All in favor?
That's a foregone conclusion, that we would purchase it regardless of what we find out? Is that what we're saying?
Not, not by the way the amendment is stated, it's a delay until then. Uh, but that is a good question, is, uh, is it automatic, they just come, and then we buy it, no? Okay?
My question is, is there another system that we could give?
Well, we had another system prior to this one, uh, and, uh, it was not as capable of doing as many things, but basically, far as the voting, you had a little voting clicker, was you on the commission when we had those?
I think, I don't remember.
And that, that basically did what just the voting part of it did. Then we moved to this one, uh, as an update on it. So, that other system may still be available, do you know?
I don't think I saw that, but I think it was, I think it was, um, yes.
Okay.
So is this the only system that, that we can use? Is there not something else out there that we could look at that might be less cost?
I, I, I do not know.
Oh, I don't know, this is what was offered to us when the other one was phased out, and we stayed with the same company, so, I don't know. I'm sure there are.
Just asking.
And I don't remember what the purchase price was for what this system is that you currently have. I don't know.
I don't remember either. I'd be, I'd be.
I'd be guessing.
Yeah, I would be too. Okay, any other discussion? Understand what you're voting on, the motion as amended? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. So, Phyllis, will you check on that, far as them coming, uh, if next meeting or two? Okay, Matt, okay. Okay, alright. Okay, Commissioner Bryant?
Item two, county clerk Phyllis Counts. County clerk Phyllis Counts came before the committee, informed us that she has restricted funds that came from title and registration services that she collects each month. Uh, the county clerks association has worked to get a bill passed in the senate and house for the collection of three do- of a three dollar title fee that would help county clerks directly. This year, county clerk Counts would like to give her employees a bonus from these funds. County attorney Sims stated that per the attached information, uh, that the county clerk did not, her request did not require commission approval. After much discussion, there was a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, and failed by a vote of three yes, four no, and one absent to not allow county clerk Phyllis Counts permission to use her title fee for bonuses for her employees.
Okay, what's the will of commission on this item?
I once again move that we do not concur with the budget committee's recommendation.
Okay, that would be allowing, uh, the county clerk to, um, use those funds as she saw fit and proposed to the budget committee, is that correct, Commissioner Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a second? You're seconded, Commissioner Guin?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Young, are you seconded? Okay, it's been made and mi- and, uh, properly seconded, uh, now the floor's open for discussion. Uh, Commissioner Guin?
Uh.
Please take the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, since this was voted down in the budget committee, should it be brought before the floor?
It does, it has nothing to do with what the commission does. It's just a suggestion from the budget committee. They can approve, they can disapprove, or they can make no recommendation. So, uh, the full commission has all authority on what they do, it doesn't re- it's not restricted by what the budget committee does. Uh, Commissioner Rose Walter?
Well, I have a question, if it states that it was passed through the senate and the house, and that she does not require the, uh, commission approval, would this not be just for informational purposes? I don't understand why we're casting a vote.
Okay, uh.
I agree, I, I was.
Okay, I, I'm gonna ask our attorney to address that question.
The minutes didn't reflect what, uh, what I said. I did not have any material before me, and I asked Phyllis the question whether or not it requires approval. I did not know at the time. But Phyllis gave me some materials, uh, these are restricted funds, they belong to this office, the county clerk's office, it's their money. They can use it for title and registration, as long as they use it for that, they can use it as they please. What the county commission needs to do is approve the moving of the funds from the restricted area to the area where Phyllis wants to spend it. That's what they do, just approve the, the removal of funds from one account to another account, is that right, Phyllis?
Yes.
Okay. Y'all understand that, it's, 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 which we do every month, change, you know, from one line to another, uh, to, uh, what's appropriated in the budget a lot of times is not what's needed six months later. So we have to change it, we got the money there, but we change the line item for the approval of the use of it. So, this is a request to move line items within her budget where she can use the funds as she proposed. Okay? Okay, that's, and, and that is basically what the motion in second has done, allows that. Any questions? Okay, if you vote yes on this item, you will be, uh, uh, voting for the line item to be changed, and you know what she plans on using it for. Commissioner Douglas?
I've got to stay focused, being a county employee, lady's front for employees, I.
I don't af- I don't think that affect, I'm, it, it's not, it, it doesn't affect your office, nor your position, nor there's no way that you're benefited from it, so. You can, but, uh, you don't have to. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, now, if I vote yes?
Yes, sir.
That allows her to do what she wants to?
That's, that's going, you're voting to move the money from one line item to the other where she can use it. You know what she intends to use it on, but you're not voting for her to give those bonuses, you're voting for the line item change. But you are informed of what she does plan on using it for. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Okay, a no vote was from who? Okay, we have, uh, Commissioner Caldwell, Commissioner Taylor, and abstention by, by Commissioner Douglas, and a no vote from Commissioner Guin. Any other no votes? Every one that I did not call her name voted yes. Okay, next item, Commissioner Bryant?
Item three, administrator of elections Sheila Allen, that's attached. Uh, the administrator of elections Sheila Allen came before the committee requesting batteries for twenty-six, uh, voting scanners. They have designated three thousand dollars for batteries, but need an additional forty-eight hundred and forty dollars to replace all the batteries with the three upcoming elections for twenty twenty-four. We had a motion by Commissioner Spray, seconded by Commissioner Ewen, and passed seven yes, one absent, to approve the purchase of the batteries, and the amount of four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for voting scanners.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Walker makes a motion for approval, Commissioner Haines seconds that. Any questions, comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item four, there was discussion on billboard signs. Item five, register of deeds and archives, chairman Randy D. Lep and maintenance supervisor Ricky Pierce by the archives building. Uh, Randy D. Lep and Ricky Pierce informed the committee that we have received a guaranteed maximum price for renovating the new slash old police building of one million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars, which is the guaranteed maximum price from Lashley Rich. This GMP expires December the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewen, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend the pr- approval of accepting the contract to com- and one absent to recommend approval of accepting the contract to complete the construction of the Archives Building with moving funds as follows. $379,000 from interior windows and doors from the courthouse funds, $95,000 from the Finance Department window project, $37,100 from Junior's house, $35,000 from the kitchen remodel at the Ralph Hastings Building, and the total of the bottom line of $62,426 for a total of $607,000, $607,526. And if any of those funds are left, they'll be put back in the funds they were taken from.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Ewen seconds. Any discussion or questions on this? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item six, Finance Director Haines, 101 General Fund Budget Amendments. They are attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Ewen, seconded by Commissioner Spray, passed seven yes and one absent to approve the 101 General Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of commission on this item?
No vote.
Mr. Spray makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Mr. Taylor seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of that approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
B, 122 Sheriff's Drug Fund Budget Amendment. We had a motion by Commissioner Hambrick, seconded by Commissioner Colwell, and passed seven yes, one absent to approve the attached 122 Sheriff's Drug Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of commission on this item?
No vote.
Commissioner Frazran makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Mitchell seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
C, 131 Highway Fund Budget Amendment. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewen, and passed seven yes, one absent to approve the attached 131 Highway Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Ashley makes a motion. Commissioner Haines seconds it. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
D, Financials for November 2023. We had a motion by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Colwell, and passed seven yes, one absent to acknowledge acceptance of, acceptance of the financials.
Okay, these are the November ones. We got two in this meeting. This goes back to the November. Entertain a motion that you received those and accepted them.
I make that motion.
Commissioner Taylor makes that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bryant seconds. Any questions on the November ones? All in favor of approval? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
E, Financials for December 2023. A motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed seven yes, one absent to acknowledge acceptance of the financials for December.
What's the will of commission on this item?
Make the motion.
Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Frazran makes a second. Any questions on the December financials? All in favor of knowledge and acceptance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
I like it.
Alrighty, let's see what we got next. Our notary publi, no, excuse me. Everybody, did y'all get one of these? Okay, what this is, this is, I brought you up speed kind of what's happening with animal control. This piece of property, which is across the street and down about 100 yards from the current location, is for sale. This property is 15 acres. The owner would not divide it. It is listed with a real estate company at the current time. It's been priced to us for $225,000, and they would give us until February the 21st to let them know something. My request tonight is, this area that's the field area, which is basically the same level as this showing here, that's not in the floodplain, for us to be able to know that it didn't, we would have to have a surveyor, and I contacted Mike Gooding. He quoted a price of $3,000 to get this certified and the fees included in that to do that. This would be a city-counting project. I'm asking for $3,000 for the total of it so we could move forward without city approval if you saw fit. But that's a request of $3,000 to hire Mike Gooding to survey that far as the level, far as it relates to floodplain there. Any questions?
How many acres is it?
There's 15 acres in the whole thing. In this, there's probably two and a half and two and a half. There's about two and a half in this area that's not in the flood zone, and about two and a half in this other field area. And the balance would be back here about, probably, there's probably about seven and a half and seven and a half acres in, in the field part. And this back here is just cropland. It hasn't access on this east border. Commissioner Rolls, do you have?
Yes, sir. What will we plan on doing with the remaining acreage?
Well, we don't need it. I can tell you that far as any projects now, it'd probably be, we'd just turn around and put it back on the market with some real estate company. We requested would they price it without buying the whole thing, but they did not want to do that. Any questions?
What is the price that we're looking at for this 15 acres?
Two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Would we be able to rent out the cropland to recoup some of that money year after year?
It is now, and I think Jimmy Carter is doing that. I have no idea far as the rent amount. This is kind of range on, you know, on cropland of that quality, two-twenty-five, somewhere in that per acre per year. You're not gonna get rich off of it because it's not that many acres.
Don't have Mike's favor.
Well, it could do that. And we're talking about, you know, if the city, if the city doesn't concur, we're back to ground zero. But, you know, we would be talking about half that far as the amount of county monies that would be put in the project. We've looked at a lot of other properties, none of which seem useful. There's some with buildings on it, some not. It's amazing how much floodland there is around city, city of Fayetteville. Most of the properties we looked at were in flood zone.
So you're asking for approval for the money for the survey?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Commissioner Eldridge, Commissioner Young seconds it. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
Okay, let's, okay, raise your hand if it's a yes vote, please. We got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 yes votes. Do you need the names on those?
I take the no votes. Let me have the names.
Okay. Now, raise your hand for the no votes and I'll call the names on it. Colwell, Tackett, Spray, Hambrick, Ewen, Walker. Did I call everybody's name that was a no vote? That get you?
Yes.
Okay. Motion pass. Next item, we're ready for our notary publics.
Christina Baker and Ramona Mejia, I'm not sure of pronunciation, by Commissioner Hambrick. Wanda Anderson Simmons by Commissioner Douglas. Zoann Brannon by Commissioner Bryant. Kimberly El Posey by Commissioner Caldwell. James Lambert by Commissioner Cooley. Renee Blackburn by Commissioner Ashley. Debbie Ragsdale by Commissioner Young.
Okay, any additions? Would entertain a motion for approval of that list then?
Make the motion.
Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Unanimously approved. We're ready for new business. I have one item. You should have received that about the, a request for approval to apply for the home grant funds. About, it's been about four or five years ago, we did a, applied for a grant for $500, I don't remember how many houses we improved on that. I think it was somewhere five or six, but it could be a few more than that. It's a really good project. Here's the people that would qualify. And I want to thank Dora Barnes from our office because she did most of the work in our office. It's a lot of work on getting these. They're really a good, good projects. But the people that qualify are, they have to be over 65. They have to have a limited income, which falls into a percentage of what the federal government says at poverty level. And then we have a home inspection on the thing, and then you have bids on improving those things. So it's a bunch of hoops to jump through. Then, once you have a list of the improvements needed, then you have bidding go out on it. And then as they improve those, we, you know, pay out the funds to those people. It doesn't mean we'll get it just because we apply, but the request is allowing me to go ahead. There's no matching monies on it, and it's been, I think it's been five years since we did the other project. So I think we'd be in good standing for, we did a real good job on it before, so that's my request on that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, Mr. Taylor makes a motion. Mr. Haines seconds it. Any questions? All in favor of approving, allowing me to apply for these? There's no local match on this. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Unanimously approved. Other new business. Commissioner Rolls Walter?
I have two items that I would like to ask some questions about. One, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but I have commented multiple times on the committees and how important it is. I feel like that the chair and the committee have input as to who serves on their board. So is it inappropriate to ask for the chair of Rules and Regulations to submit a list of people that they would like to see serve on that committee before the next meeting?
I don't know if it's inappropriate, but I don't think it's covered in Rules and Legislation for there be requests for, you know, the committee to who serves on that. It's, it's, it, even though we hadn't filled that position, we're doing it properly. And I would think we should continue until we get somebody approved on it. You narrowing down a request, just a few, and in the democratic process of committees, that's not the way it's usually done. So I'm not denying your request if somebody wants to, you know, say they can nominate them for that, but the chairman has no more power than any of the rest of you far as who serves on their committee.
I just want to be supportive of the committees and who they want to see and who would.
Well, I appreciate that, but one of the 24, you know, I don't have.
Okay. Well, several of the ones that we voted on tonight did have, and so just trying to offer. And my second question would be tonight of finance, do we have any updates on the pilot?
Our office has started gathering the numbers. We haven't got a, a number yet that we were talking about the last time. We should, my hope is to have something to present to budget with a number at the next budget meeting, which will be January the 9th, but I don't have a finalized number yet, yet.
Okay, so I do have some follow-up comments to that. And you'll have to excuse if I'm a little all over the place with my line of questioning. We had a tremendous loss in my family. My father passed away and his burial was yesterday, so I've obviously had a lot on my mind. So if I seem a little all over the place, then please excuse that. But I do have some questions I would like to add to the list for some people to look into. I have reviewed several of the resolutions this body and the city board voted upon in regards to shared pilots, and they appear to be exactly the same. I requested from, from, some from the city, and then, of course, I can view the ones on the drive from the county. Within each agreement or exhibit, exhibit documents that cite the company, length of terms of the pilots, and the manner in which the tax rate was to be divided. And on the comptroller website, the same pilot information is listed, but it also lists the correct amount the county and city should be receiving in regards to the tax rate for several years back. So you can literally go on there and it shows this is what the county should have received and this is what the city should have received. And I don't know if Finance has looked at that or knew that that information was readily available. I've tried to dig into it. So I have a line of questioning and I've, you know, I don't know the answers, and so that's why I'm putting it out there. I want to make the most informed decision as possible. I tried to go to all the budget meetings, and this is not something that was brought before the budget. And so that's why I brought it up at a few other meetings earlier, because I was certain that there were other commissioners that didn't know about it as well. So my first question is, are not the resolutions considered contractual agreements? The second, have any of the resolutions been pulled and reviewed to see if the terms specifically state what happens if any party fails to comply with the agreement? If the resolutions are not followed and executed properly by one party, can the other require the resolution to be upheld properly due to statute of frauds doctrine? My third question, do statutes of limitations apply to joint resolutions in the same manner in which they apply to civilian contracts when there is a breach of contract? And what is that timeframe? The fourth, would in each resolution count as a separate contract therefore affecting the prescribed statute of limitations? My fifth question, can a tolling of the statute of limitations apply here since the commission voted for one thing to occur and we were not made aware of the fact that the previous commissions voted upon this and it was not actually executed? Number six, have we visited the possibility of detrimental reliance being a claim the county could make in this situation? And number seven, the letter that was sent from Mr. Sims to Finance at the request of the commission, in my opinion, actually suggests a different course of action that was actually, that was not suggested and presented to the commission as a proper course of action. And I'll read that. It says, "I would suggest that the Lincoln County Finance Department compile a study of the amount of the assessment for each year the pilot has been in effect for each pilot project. Apply the percentage or calculation for the pilot, determine the amount paid to the county by the city, and ultimately the amount of the shortage to the county. This amount could be presented to the city for possible reimbursement." And then you go on to state, "However, the county may have waived any reimbursement since it could be argued that the county agreed to an equal division as determined by its conduct in accepting one half of the pilot payments over the years." But I agree with the initial suggestion, and I do feel like that should have been our first move, is to find those numbers and present them instead of automatically reaching for the fact or possibility of a lawsuit. Number eight, I do not know if a motion needs to be made or really what that motion would need to be to ensure that a situation where decisions regarding resolutions or really contracts in general not being followed comes to finance with this, so this doesn't happen again. So I would like to see if we could task our Rules and Regulations Committee with getting an answer back on that topic. I've found that since becoming a commissioner, the county has been pulled into multiple lawsuits, and I just want to make sure that we are on the up and up of all of this moving forward.
Okay, first off, Commissioner Frazran motion, I believe I'm correct on this, was us to find out the amount of money before moving forward with anything on this. So I think that, let's find out that first. And I'm not standing up, but Mr. Sims has nothing to do with those contracts on those. They have their own attorney, IDB, Mark Manitoff is their attorney, and I believe it's Sims, Bassin Sims, is it not? I think that he's with. He does not write those contracts nor enforces them, and neither does this. When this body receives a request on a pilot on it, we vote on it, but you never see the contract on the thing. We vote on a percentage and reduction of their taxes on it. So no member of this ever sees the contract. They never saw any of the money. They don't know how much was collected. So, yeah, we may, I don't know, you know, how much the money, and we're gonna find out that, but I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. money, and we're gonna find out that, but I think we're getting ahead of ourselves until we find out that by the motion that's already been passed by this commission, unless I'm overruled by the attorney.
No, you're not overruled by the attorney.
Okay, so, I appreciate your questions, but let's find out how much money we're talking about, because that was part of that motion. We take no action until we find out that figure.
I just want to reiterate that this wasn't brought before the commission until I brought it up, and I don't think that people are aware of all this information, and in the resolutions that, and it shows, I pulled the minutes from the city, it matches what we voted on, and it shows what the rates are and what we're supposed to be getting, it's all within these. And I just want to make sure everybody's voting informed and that the community's aware of all of it.
I don't think there's any denial that it wasn't done properly.
Well, there are questions that I have, and I want to get it out there so everybody else is aware that there may be some other options, and I really wish that the initial suggestion hadn't have been just worrisome about a lawsuit, but instead presenting those numbers, and I really wish it had been brought before the commission to vote on, instead of having to hear about it fourth and fifth hand, and then bring it to the floor and have to ask about it, because I think that we really need to be a good steward of the monies of the county, and we know that we need to capture some additional revenue, and so I'm just to continue to dig in and bring things like that to the commission to hear about, because I don't think that we are hearing about it, so, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Got a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Commissioner Gunther Berg makes, all in favor of adjournment? Any opposed? We're adjourned.